Ladies and gentlemen, good evening. And welcome to November the 29th, 2021, Scottsburg Common Council here in downtown Scottsburg. And I hope you've had a great day today. It's been a blessed day, some beautiful day of warming up here. So I hope everybody had a great Thanksgiving and prepare for a great Christmas season. We had a fun time with the prayer, didn't we? Wasn't that fun? And, uh, you know. So anyway, we're gonna call our... To order the first thing we do when we call our... These orders will have, like our Congress just have prayer. Then we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you don't mind, we'll stand for prayer. And then the Pledge of Allegiance. Well, we just come before you tonight just to thank you and to praise the name of Jesus our Lord and Savior and coming King and Father. We thank you, Father, for Scottsburg. We thank you for the citizens of Scottsburg. And Father, I want to thank you especially for those who have said, "Here am I, send me." And those who work for the citizens of Scottsburg. Many of them here, many of them still. We have many more here. So Father, just pray your blessing upon them. And pray your protection. Thank you, Father, for the camaraderie we have, the family atmosphere that we have. Father, and we just lean into you. Father, keep us safe, give us wisdom, give us discernment, give us understanding, and give us your grace, I pray. Father, thank you for our town. We thank you for our citizens, Father. We pray over our citizenry as well, Father. There'll be many moving things. Father, would you bring the people you would have, that you would want here? Father, that we just continue to grow as a city that the light shines from. Thank you for the peace that we have and the joy that we have, Father, that is found in you. Father, we praise your name. I pray for these councilmen as well, Father, that you give them wisdom, you give them discernment, you give them understanding, Father. We love you and praise you. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The next thing on our agenda is the roll call by our district treasurer, Jan Harden.
Chris Albertson.
Here.
Phil Hubler.
Here.
Rick Mann.
Here.
Christian Evans.
Here.
Chuck Rose.
Okay, the next thing we have is the approval of the minutes for the November 8th, 2021 meeting. If you read through the minutes, we'll take a motion to approve the minutes as presented unless you've found mistakes.
Make a motion to approve.
Christian Evans makes the motions to approve the minutes as presented. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Chris Albertson seconds the motion. Uh, questions or comments, concerns? Bring down all in favor, say aye.
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 Well, I oppose like sign. Unanimous, thank you very much. Next thing we have is the public comment section. The Scottsburg City Council accept public comments. Individuals wishing to address the council will be asked to come forward and state their name for the record. This person will have five minutes to voice their opinion. Their remarks should focus on issues and not be used to target city employees or elected officials. Now is your time to come forward and make your voice heard. Welcome to Democracy 101. Anybody? Going once, going twice? Okay. Next thing we have is, uh, the public hearing for an additional appropriation for premium pay. So we want to open this to the public to any type of public... Because the next thing we have is additional, uh... Now is the time for you to come forward. Again, we'd ask for you to state your name and if you have comments or questions on additional appropriation for premium pay. Anybody wanting to come forward? Okay.
Show of hands.
Hearing now, we will close the public session. Next thing is old business. This is the third reading of ordinance, 2021-33, an ordinance establishing a policy on local concessions. This will be the third reading.
I will note on the Google Drive there is revision that changed on page two that the common council will be the entity to make any approval as to placement on city property. That was discussed at the last meeting. So I understand that one of your package still had the board of commissioners. It is in the Google Drive as amended last time. That includes common council.
Make the motion to approve that amendment.
Christian Evans makes the motion to approve as amended. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Rick Mann seconds. Questions, comments, concerns? Hearing now, going for the third reading. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose like sign? Unanimous, thank you very much. Okay, the next thing is...
That told me to be published.
Thank you. Going now down to new business. Resolution 2021-R-12, a resolution establishing COVID-19 premium pay. So... Joshua.
You'll be jumping on that? So two, I think there's several aspects of this. So under the, uh... Did the public, or did the additional appropriation that was published? And then we had the public hearing on that. So it was one of the requirements for state board of councils to move the money, the ARP money, into our council salary fund, if you will. So any type of COVID pay, emergency pay can be authorized by the council. So we went through those steps. This resolution just details all that question or someone else speaks to the specifics of that pay. But generally, we're at the point now that we can authorize, we do have the money, that this resolution will also move the money properly to go ahead and fund that. Uh, Jan can speak to this as well. But there is a process with the additional appropriations. State board of councils has to approve that. And I believe they have, is it 14 days of rest?
I believe it's like 14, 15.
So I don't typically, doesn't take that long. But they would have to officially approve that before that response could be remitted.
And our goal is to get it finished, uh, get it...
Soon as we can.
Soon as we can for Christmas, hopefully.
Just the specifics of that. This would be all full-time employees, at 2,500, um, minus a few. And then 1,500 for those who had started on April 1st of 2021 to this date. So there would be the smallest discrepancy in there just because of people who had come on board, you know, in the last few months. Is that equal pay? How does that work? So as a council, we decided at 1,500, was that amount? And 2,500 for, um, the amount for full-time who've been working throughout the duration. Can we talk about the discrepancy with the average annual wage? Absolutely. So the other caveat to that, there is, I don't want to misspeak. It's a hu... There is a wage earner, that a city employee that generates 150% of the state's average annual wage for all occupations, which that equates to 72... Are you laughing because I missed?
No, you're exactly right. It's just the measures that one government has picked to us.
It equates to about $72,000 annual salary. So if you make above that per the ARP guidelines, you cannot use that money to do that, to pay, uh, and those in that category. So what we've done is to take... Jan is in 12. 12 total employees?
10, I think it was around 10.
10.
There's, yeah.
So those employees who are in that category, we are going to go ahead and authorize 2,500 out of the existing budget. So that they get the same amount as those who were, um, getting that bonus for the duration of COVID. So, uh, that was the holdup. We were trying obviously to pass this. Councilman Mann said move this meeting up because we were trying to pass the last meeting. Uh, but we just had to give clarification. We had outside legal counsel provide some opinion on that as well. That's where we are and that's what this resolution would do. So it's what we're voting on tonight.
Right, and you know, we just felt that for, people that made above that threshold, they dealt with COVID just like people that were below it.
Absolutely.
And we felt like they needed to be rewarded for, for their service. Um, you know, we appreciate everybody. And, you know, we think COVID's over. But we're, it sounds like we're not through the woods yet. So hopefully, hopefully that'll, this will help you a little bit and show how much we appreciate you. You guys have anything you want to say?
We will something to say. I'd like to say, what's the reasoning behind the $1,500 for anybody after April? What's, what's the...
The rea... I can only speak from what my reasoning was. And, uh, is that the original monies were appropriated by Congress for people that dealt with COVID for the, since the beginning. And we felt like somebody that came in later, uh, after the big emergency and shutdown and having to work through all the craziness that we all went through like last Christmas. Um, we felt like that, uh, people that just came in the last few weeks, you know, they didn't have to deal with that. Um, it's nothing against them. You know, it was just, how do we, you know, is it fair to pay the guy that has to, that came in four or five weeks ago the same as somebody that dealt with all the craziness last Christmas?
Right, I, I understand. But, you know, it seems like we're always being compared to other cities, you know, when it's handy. But for something like this, you know, I, I don't know how the other cities did it.
Well, I, I don't know how they did it. I just, you know, I sure didn't want to make people that, from my point of view, somebody that worked through all that, "Hey, I've been here." And this guy just got here three weeks ago and he's getting the same as I get?
I mean, I, I don't feel that way.
I know that, but there might be some people that would feel that way.
You know, I feel like we've all been in this together. You know, we got quarantined at work.
I know you did. I know, I, I feel your pain being in schools and what we went through. So that was just our thinking. Do you, do you, is anybody else want to...
No, I mean, I think that's, you know, the number, the 2,500 number was, you know, where we started. Uh, and then the question came, I can't remember, Jim, what was that? How many employees was that that affected from April to now?
Eight.
Yeah. So there was eight total in that category. Some of which had started, you know, like Councilman Mann had said, last couple of weeks. So we didn't, as a council, I think, want to look at that as a slap in the face of those who, like you said, Jason, that have quarantined at work, who've been here the entire time. Uh, so that's where we ultimately had a discussion to stare at it a little bit, um, in looking at 2,500. But then we also ran into the issue, as I stated before, with the, you know, 10, 12 employees that were above that threshold. Uh, and we didn't want to leave them out. But I also not leaving the people who've started, you know, here recently out. So we wanted to kind of make it as equitable as possible, uh, for lack of a better term. Obviously, I don't think anything that, yeah, there's not going to be a perfect solution to it, no matter if you go across the board or however. I know Austin, in Austin's case, I don't believe that the reason they did it the way they did it is I don't think anybody was above the threshold, correct? So they didn't have, they didn't run into any of the issue of up 72 or 73,000. So they, that's why they were able to kind of skirt that through, whereas we were in a different situation. But I, that's, I'm just speaking for me. But I think Councilman Mann said it too, is, well, at least as far as their thinking goes. Well, I just ask you.
Well, it's not a slap in the... We, we don't mean it to disrespect anybody that came to the city. We value everybody. I mean, we want to include them. You know, we were just kind of trying to follow the law, what they, that what the intent was. But, you know.
What about your part-time employees that's been through all this last application?
Um, they were not included in that.
Yeah, not included in this, at this point. No, I mean, that was a discussion that we had. And I think at this point where we're at, I think time is in the essence for this resolution to get it before the holidays. And I think the full-time, you know, part-time had worked through the pandemic as well. Uh, this money has, has expiration date, if you will, in December 24. Uh, so this is something that I think we can go back to the drawing board and look at part-time. But I think at this point, our priority was the full-time and those who've worked, you know, to keep the utilities up and going through a pandemic and the emergency essential workers, quote unquote. Not the part-time workers. Uh, but that was, I don't want to say easier mechanism, just to look at full-time and take that chunk. Uh, but, you know, we can certainly go back to the drawing board with the money remaining. I think in total, this is 225,000. Um, we have right at about a million and a half, I think, um, that we have to play with. So, um, I think that's something that we can discuss for sure.
I don't think anybody's, uh, guessed.
No.
For the part-time, it just never, we never even, to be honest, we just... I don't think it ever came up. It was always about the full-time employees. So when we discussed it. And that may be an error on our part.
Yeah, because you do have some part-time employees, Dan would be one of them. And actually, you got some. And it's been through our business for the last few years. Sure, they only put in 30, 32 hours a week, but they've been right here with us.
Well, uh, what we need to do is go back to the drawing board. And I, I'm not opposed to doing that. Okay? I don't know that we can do it in this resolution. Is that correct, Josh?
No, and I think, you know, to part of that is, is how we defined part-time, I think, was, we didn't, we didn't have a discussion on this. But you talked about volunteer fire department, right? You know, are they, you know, is that, that's kind of going to open up that? Are they part-time? I know there's people who work 30, 35 hours a week. That's, you know, they're definitely part-time. So we felt that's, as far as this drawl goes, to get this before the holidays, full-time, and I'm not going to say it was the easiest because this was not an easy task. But it made it cut and dry. Here's that money at the top. And then now we can discuss what needs to be done. Uh, but I think it's definitely a discussion we have.
And I, I can just say from, you know, we... You've worked 32 hours a week. If you feel like we disrespected you, I'm sorry, that was not our intent. Uh, you know, I, that definitely not our intent to disrespect anybody that works for the city. So we'll just go back and look at it, okay? We still have time to get that done. I saw the 24th.
The 24th of...
The part-time employees.
This one, that's up to you guys. Additional appropriation, we have to... And I don't know, that's one thing as far as making this. I don't know the numbers as far as what we would be talking about. I don't know that every city is, that there is not, not that one universal approach to this. So, um, if you select a minimum number of hours over the course of the year, uh, how many people that impacts, whether or not that's funds, that would be in this allotted amount that we've moved over or not? I, I don't know. That would be somewhat known as that. And to follow on that comment, I want to make it clear, like, we don't have the right answer. I don't know that there is a right answer. I mean, I think regardless of what we decide to do, uh, it's inevitable that somebody or some entity is going to be left out. I mean, it's just, it's impossible to do it all the way across the board and make everyone happy. And we understand that. Uh, and I think that that, with the time that we have, the time that we put into this, I think for, for this resolution, this was our priority. But I think we've left the door open. I know we left the door open to look at this again. Uh, because there is a limited scope on what we can use these funds for, uh, to go back and talk about part-time or to talk about other entities that could, could utilize and should, deservedly so, deserve these funds. So I, I, again, I think it's, it's been a lot of work to get to this point. Uh, but our priority, like, like Councilman Mann said, had been the full-timers. We did, there wasn't much dialogue with the part-timers just because it kind of opened a little bit more discussion that, you know, which road we wanted to travel down. Uh, but with the full-timers, we felt like this was a fair, uh, a fair negotiation, if you will, and we were going with it. And I think that's why we wanted to get to the cross finish line before the holidays, so.
And, you know, like Bill said, I think that we can, we can look at it. I, I think we would need a little information from our department heads. Who are your full, who are your part-time people? That work or not that you... I mean, I don't know how much they work. You know, we would need that information. If you guys could provide that with us, that would help us to make that discussion. You know, "Hey, I got three guys. They all work over 30 hours a week." You know, and I feel, do you see what I'm getting at? So if we could get that information, that would help us in our, aid us in our discussion. Would, would you agree with it?
I agree.
Christian.
Does anyone else have questions for council? Bring down before them Resolution 2021-R-12, Resolution Establishing COVID-19 Premium Pay Program. That is before you, uh, in your three-page. Here is there a motion to go forward with this resolution?
Make the motion.
Christian Evans makes the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Go ahead, hold for seconds. Questions, comments, concern? Bring down all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose like sign? Unanimous? I want to thank you as well for, uh, for the employees. Thank you so much for helping these folks out. Uh, we've had several meetings with several departments and, and going forward, we are going to look at a, uh, earn as you learn. And so we plan to try and put this into place next, next year. There's several opportunities there. So we'll keep everybody informed on that. So thank you, Jim. Next thing is Resolution 2021-R-13, Resolution of the City of Scottsburg Common Council approving an order of the Scottsburg Plan Commission approving a resolution of the City of Scottsburg Redevelopment Commission designating and declaring certain areas as an economic development areas. Approving an economic development plan for said areas, establishing a residential housing program in said areas and related matters. Josh, this is all in, you know, going forward with residential TIF. What we're doing here in Scottsburg to enhance growth is to, uh, help contractors with infrastructure. And in doing that, we have right now on our board, uh, somewhere between 200 and 300 homes and apartments assuming Scottsburg. So in doing that, we're looking for residential TIF to help provide income to pay that as well. So that's what this is all about. And, uh, so, and the state allowed us to do this several years back. Uh, we have worked with Scott School District 2 as well to make sure that they're not going to in any way be hurt or encumbered. We've had, uh, we've had legal counsel as well as we've had folks who exceed in the residential, uh, TIF area. We will speak to both, uh, the Scott School District 2 and this council here as well. So is there a motion to go forward then with our Resolution 2021-R-13?
I just want to say a few things before, for the public record, this is reflected in the minutes. I think this is, um, is disheartening for a couple of reasons. I think we're in a position to where this is passed or failed. Um, for the City of Scottsburg, I don't think we should be in this position. Uh, I came on board late to the redevelopment commission. Uh, by the time I got there, we already promised, um, a few developers up to $3.5 million. If this does not pass tonight, that money's going to come out of the commercial TIF. Um, and that's pretty much two years' worth of commercial TIF funds. Um, I am all for assisting in the growth of the community. Uh, but I think that this is misguided. I think it is way too much. I think this was a promise and then figure out later how to pay for it. And, um, there's been no housing study. There's still not an update to the zoning ordinance. There's still no comprehensive plan. We don't know if these are the houses that we actually need or not. And we're going to pay up to $3.5 million. Um, I'm going to vote yes on this only because if we don't, then this is coming out of our commercial TIF. And that is a disaster. Um, with the residential TIF, we will be paid back. Um, but there were a lot of concerns in voting yes. So for the public record, I just want that to be on the minutes and reflected in the minutes before I have to vote yes on this, so.
With that said, I appreciate that. And again, Mr., uh, Mr. Evans did come in. Chuck Rose stepped down off of the, this, uh, redevelopment and Mr. Mann took his place. Mr. Rose was not for this and voted for this.
Mr. Evans.
Not his councilman Evans.
It's not councilman Mann. So I'm sorry. That's okay.
This one. So we fix it now.
And again, this is a, uh, this is a figure that came up, not in the city. This was Renaissance engineering. I don't agree with the figure. That was all discussed prior. Mr. Evans coming in. Uh, the City of Scottsburg is planning on doing a lot of the sewer work there. We're planning on doing a lot of our own water lines there as well. Uh, so we do want to help, however we can. And, you know, we don't feel it will come in near to this kind of, kind of money. Uh, we want to use as much funding as we can without borrowing. So therein, I know Mr. Evans doesn't see that, but that's been the plan of this administration. And my whole economic development is based on housing, to bring housing to Scottsburg. And, uh, so that's what we're wanting to do. And so as a result of that, we should improve your utilities, facilities as well, so. But anybody else want to say anything to this?
I'm on the redevelopment committee also. And I thought, and I still do, think this is a good idea to help bring housing in. But I think it's not going to be paid out all at once. It's going to be paid out over a period of time. Uh, so that part will be okay. We'll be okay on it also. But I think maybe as a, I think we have to look at this as each time, it, this isn't going to be an open-door thing to do for anybody else that's going to be coming into town. We'll let them put in the infrastructure and then charge that against the house. That's the way it's done in a lot of other communities. So I, I'll go along with the game tonight. But we made the commitment before and I'm not going to back out of that commitment. But I think the next time it comes around, we should take a little bit, just look at it a little bit more in depth.
And we want you to know that no money will be given to a developer. The money we pay for the infrastructure putting in, we'll buy the pipe and put it in. We will, you know, we, we need to help them with... The biggest cost is going to come in paving the urban way. That's going to be where the main money's going to be spent. These houses will range from the start of a home with probably 169, 179, up to 270 in that median range. We have an area that we're looking to develop anywhere from 350 on up to 600, 700,000. So we have several areas.
So, Mayor, when you say the developer is not going to get money, a developer in a typical situation would buy the pipe, run the pipe, and then feed it over to the city. So I guess I'm unclear when you're saying we're not giving them, we're not writing them a check. I understand that. But that is, that's cutting their costs.
And that's, that's what I'm talking about. And that's my enthusiasm to have them come here to spark it up.
So you don't think we can say that we're not giving the money the developer find?
We're not giving them a check. So we would have...
But we're going to give them money.
We're not going to give them. We're going to put in the structure.
Just want to make that clear.
Yeah, they're going to be more profitable because it's cut the cost. I, you know, I... I'm pretty defensive of the school system. And this does affect the school system, but the school is on board with it. Please, uh, when I'm, uh, being a teacher and old principal, you know, I, I always worry that we're not in front of, I have funds to keep up our buildings and stuff. But I think it will be good in the long run. I, the thing that bothered me the most about all of this is that for, well, almost two years now, we've talked about having a comprehensive study. We still don't have that. We still, I, I mean, I think we're probably right in the type of houses that you're talking about. But I don't know that for a fact. I can only gauge by the people that I've known, the people I've met for, that have moved here through the students or met the community that moved to here. But yeah, maybe we do need houses that. But I don't know that for a fact. And I, I still think that this is going to be two years into, into my term. And we've talked about this since the first of my term. We do need a comprehensive study. Do we have any, any idea? And I want to vote yes for this. I, I think it will help our, our community. I think it's going to bring students to the school. It's going to bring people that are going to spend money. I think it's a good idea to, uh, to increase housing. And I guess that's... And I guess that's my concern. That, you know, I, I still don't know why we haven't have a, without a comprehensive study, Kevin. I don't know, but we can update the zoning laws. The comprehensive study they're talking about is an old one, that has been done years ago. We did do, and we do need one, that is exactly correct. They're sending us, this administration is forward to do this, where what we've done is we had an entity come to us, said River Hills, says we can get you a grant to pay for that. So that grant has been applied for, we have not received the best liberties and it hasn't started.
Okay. So it, so we are.
That's already been in the works, it kind of include a zoning revamp as well, and so all those things are already in the works.
Do we, do we know when that was applied for, what the timeline looks like on that?
Basically, yes, that's, that was applied for and we did not get the last one. We can notify here by the weekend. So do we just go ahead and pay for it, or are we applying it? So. Well, you know, I guess my thing is about this, I struggle with not having a comprehensive study and, and I'm spending the taxpayer's money without all the information that we, I mean, to be honest. I mean, because we're dealing with a comprehensive study or a plan that's before Councilman Evans was born.
Right.
I mean.
Us five.
You were fine.
And Rick's saying the kind of premises, what I was going to say is, you know, we, we don't have the information, we essentially have a blank check. We don't know what it's going to cost, it's, you know, it's kind of a, a, a guessing at this point. Uh, yet we're all kind of painted into the corner and feel like that if you don't vote for it, what's the alternative look? Uh, but I'm going to vote yes. My only thing is, is I'd like to see some numbers on paper with this thing. Let's see what we're spending, what we're going to report, can we get that as a council, since we are responsible for the taxpayers' money? I, I kind of like to know what that looks like.
And let me say this, this, because this is coming from utilities, it's coming from the utility folks that are going to be paying for that. While granted, yes, I want to use that, once I, that gets a little low, then I'm going to get some, get some for TIF money. So again, I want to utilize what we have available, so we're not in debt.
Correct.
And, you know, I don't like debt any more than anybody else does. That's the last thing I want to do, is in debt, our citizens, any decent, what we are.
But, but to Rick's point, we're responsible for the taxpayer dollars, not knowing what this looks like. We've got a three, three and a half million dollar price tag on something that, we're saying it might be a million, it might be two and a half million.
And again, this was Renaissance Engineering, and I think that was taken, basically, we don't do a thing, we just step back and let them do everything. And that's not been my idea forever.
So I, I'd just like to have some numbers, what that looks like as we're moving forward, progressing through the developmental days.
You know, and, and I understand what you're talking about, the old way of doing things, but a lot of things have changed. And we saw lumber go through the roof, we've seen, you know, shortages of employment, so there've been a lot of issues. So we needed something to try to spark that, so that's what we're doing here now, so, so thank you. So is there going forward?
Can I ask one question? I just want to be sure that, I thought I heard what you answered, Chris. Did you say we're going to use utility funds and not use TIF funds?
We are, we will use TIF funds for as well. We can use utility funds, just like right now. If utility has funds, they can buy the water line.
Okay, I just, I just wanted to be sure.
That's what we're going to do.
Thank you.
So I guess we need a motion to approve.
I need a motion to, yes, to.
I'll make that motion.
So Chris, I'm sorry, Rick Mans makes the motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-one dash R dash thirteen, is there a second?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Bill Holden makes the motion twenty twenty-one dash R dash thirteen.
He's second.
Second, I'm sorry.
Well, we will clarify with them that it is a second, we had a motion on.
Is that the second?
Or, or second?
It's a second. Rick made this motion, Bill second, so. Any questions, comments before we move? Bring out all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Suppose like sign? You can answer, thank you.
Before we move far from that, make the suggestion, we could go ahead and publish an RFP, request for proposals, to get some numbers on the comprehensive plan, subdivision control, uh, comprehensive zoning ordinance rebrand, and see what the price tag will have. We would need that information anyway for our grant.
Sounds good to me. Sixty thousand dollars.
And probably twenty would be my guess.
Yeah. That's what I was trying to get.
You suggested getting proposals?
Yes.
That you just did.
Yeah, I, I don't need more, actually, if you guys are okay with that, I will, um, prepare a notice and approve that at the next meeting. Give our, and get past the holidays and have that some time, or maybe the second meeting in January to, as a response date and see what we're looking at.
And Joe, that's been my main reason, I'm trying to get the grant, so I'm not spending the people's money. So I want you to know that we're not big.
And, and we, we appreciate that, but we also, we, we're spending the people's money, we need them, the, all the information to spend it wisely. And so if it costs us a little money to spend the money a little wisely, I feel like we're all on board on that.
Could potentially save a little bit more there.
Yeah, if it saves us money in the long run.
Anything else on this before we leave this here?
I got a question.
Sure.
It probably doesn't have anything to do with what we just passed, but I'm certain when, when the water lines and sewer lines and electric is all put in, that, the gentlemen out here, they know what's going on, they know what to do. But isn't that also the purpose of the city engineer, kind of determine, hey, you know, that looks good, this, we need to tweak this over here a little bit?
That's what this engineer has already brought to us, in other words, we already have all the blueprints, we have all that already laying there.
But that's the developer's engineering.
Yeah.
He's going to speak on behalf of what's best for the developer. We don't have anybody as far as a city to say what's best for us, other than Greg Marks versus contracted that big app. Like Bill's talking, someone that's staff, to look at this and.
Who is the city engineer? Is there, basically, I know we're using Midwest Engineer. And will it be out there during all this construction? You know, we, yeah, we, we've talked to them about that, and maybe we might want to look to somebody closer by. So, but they've done a fantastic job discussing this one. I know other towns around us have a city engineer be able to make those judgments also.
We've talked about, uh, at the county level, an engineer as well, would that be something that, would be possible to share?
Maybe, you know, I mean, certainly what we're trying to do is work with the county, work with the city of Austin, we want to work as a team.
Share with Austin, hire an engineer, keep the cost low, because is there a, work for an engineer to, to stay busy with the city, but if we share, you know, among Austin and Scottsburg and the county?
Chris, I, I like that idea, but I, I will say something, and I don't mean this to be at you. I'm all for working with Austin and I'm all for working with county, but we need to draw some lines. We need to draw some lines of who's paying for what and who's freeload and who's not. I, I mean, I'm sorry, I, I, that's not you, that's not anybody up here.
Yeah.
But when we're going through this, there's a whole lot of, jump on my back, I'll carry you to the finish line.
Yeah.
And I'm all for togetherness and go by ya, and let's all work together, but it's a whole lot easier to say if the bills need to be paid by somebody else than it is for us to coordinate.
What specifically are you talking?
Well, I don't think we have time to talk about all of it, but I think the regional sewer deal is one that comes to mind. And I think that's a big issue. I mean, I don't know that we, we're in, we're in this together, but Jan, I don't want to put you on the spot, but has Austin paid a, an attorney fee?
They have paid nothing, and that, those fees are up to close to fifty thousand right now.
So that's the one that comes to mind, and I.
I think it's forty-five.
I will say it's working with them as long as we have something in writing that says here's what we'll pay, here's what they'll pay, et cetera, et cetera.
What we're doing is we're taking the amount of homes that are being serviced by regional sewer in Scottsburg, the amount of homes being served by regional sewer in Austin, and the percentage there of those homes, each entity will pay.
Who's, who has that in writing? Does anybody have it in writing?
That's not the, it's a formal contract.
So as of right now, as of right now, we're paying all of this?
Legal bills, this is a legal bill.
Correct. So that's what I'm, Austin, Austin.
That also is a bit for the words, what you're saying.
That's not, that's not.
I guess that's what they're telling me, they tell me that they'll take it in a second.
Oh, I understand a little sick here. But we don't have anything and they, they have to pay, I'm not saying that they're not good for it, but we don't have anything that covers us to say that they are or they aren't.
I would have no deep, no reason to doubt the word of the mayor.
I, I'm not doubting Mayor Hawkins whatsoever, that's not what I'm saying one bit, I just know that when Jan shows us the legal bills and shows that who's paying them. I mean, I, I, I'm a city councilman, the city of Scottsburg, for the city residents in Scottsburg.
I will say, Christian, after our, our regional sewer meeting, Roger did say, well, get ahold of Chris and tell him this is coming.
For sure.
I didn't think it was my place, but I just think as a courtesy to the clerk treasurer, they would need to know that what they're going to be expected to pay.
Yeah, and I don't, and they might not even know, I'm just saying.
And I, that's, I don't know, but I didn't think it was my place, it's not doubting Roger or anything, but I just.
Absolutely.
I think we need an MOU.
I agree.
I think you just need to place this, all that stuff documented for the, for the, no gray area, right?
Yeah, I mean, a, as far as, um, an MOU, that has been what the stated direction has been, um, as you all know from being a part of those meetings, they're two separate fights. The cities are two different positions, but we've been lumped together now, basically put on the other side from the county as well, so, um, while we might be on the same side of the B in the lawsuit, um, the, who has the more to gain or lose is definitely, is definitely different percentage wise. So, and there's, and as, as I told you all, now we're talking about the public, so, uh, not, not my preferred location to be discussing it, but, um, there's obviously some advantages to having another entity involved in litigation that has some of the same, similar, same stories or issues with an entity that's well documented, so. Not saying that where we're at in the situation is where we may have preferred to be, but I can also tell you that the, the litigation bills, I think, are just beginning to.
Yes, I see. Well, and I, I, I think the point that Councilman Evans, I'm going to speak on your behalf a little bit, Christian, I hope you don't mind.
Don't.
Uh, but the point is, is that we, if we're going to.
Reach into these agreements, whether it's an engineer or whatever, there needs to be an MOU. The city of Austin has a full-time engineer, but I, I speak to multiple times a week that is, um, excellent to work with. Um, we, we've used Midwest on a, I'd say a case-by-case basis as we need them, but, yeah, we, as far as from my perspective, it makes things a lot easier because, uh, as the, we all try to stay in our lanes. I, I'm not going to advise you on a, you know, request for proposal on sewer line or, you know, thickness and, and depth and all that good stuff, whereas an engineer could drive that and smith that out a lot quicker. So as far as a, the zoning ordinance, RFP, you know, I don't need a four, I'm not asking for, you guys are shaking your head, I will have that ready and get that sent out so we have a response up by the end of January that we can address. Decide if that's something we want to try to bite the bullet, I don't know where budgets are, if that's something that area plant has money budgeted for or council, I didn't think so, but, so we may look at that, um, at later day. And that redevelopment, I know a lot of areas, that, that's a, an entity that could possibly fund some of them as well.
Yeah, and again, I want to make it abundantly clear, I'm not saying anything about Austin or saying that they're not good for the money or anything about Mayor Hawkins' words. I, I'm just saying we need to have, instead of making promises and doing agreements and firing from the hip, this needs to be done before we go into this. So we, we know level playing ground, there's MOU in place, we know what we're doing, that's all, that's all I'm saying.
I think to Chris, Councilman Albertson's comment, though I like the idea of all three of these sharing, I mean, to try to work together, you know? So why not have a common engineer, there'd be all three opinions.
Yeah.
So I, I like the idea.
Have to entertain discussion over that for everybody else?
Absolutely. And the engineer, the, the legal counsel, I mean, I, I know he's a sharp guy, he's already knowledgeable of this with Austin. And, uh, and the regional sewer, I mean, we put, we put new flow meters as soon as we can and all three at once, so there's definitely, we definitely have an issue, so. As an ongoing battle, that needs, that needs to be fought. You know, our citizens are being charged seventy percent more than what our, what Scottsburg citizens are, regional sewer citizens are paying seventy percent more than Scottsburg. So we need, we need to correct that for our citizens, and many of our year voting areas, some of them. Anyways, Resolution twenty twenty-one dash R dash fifteen, Resolution authorizing the entry by the City of Scottsburg into a private public agreement and, uh, related documents, and taking certain other actions related to, this is a deal with Greg Marks. This is a bill operate transfer and, uh, so that he can help assist in need. That's kind of what we do with the sewer plant. So is there a motion, what question do you have about this? Do you want to read through this and understand this, okay? A motion to pass Resolution twenty twenty-one dash R dash fifteen.
I'll make the motion.
Christian Evans makes the motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
There's how many seconds, questions, comments, concerns? Bring out all in favor of say aye?
Aye.
Suppose like sign? You can answer, thank you. Next thing is Resolution twenty twenty-one dash R dash fifteen, Resolution of the Common Council City of Scottsburg, Indiana authorizing a budgetary transfer to the two thousand twenty-one, but I'll give this to Mr. Frank.
Right, before you, as council, this is something that, um, if you remember back last year, this is something that the clerk's office does every year, and we are pretty blessed there. As you see, we've only got five transfers where, um, there's, there's a little shortfall in some of the lines. Kudos to all the department heads, they work very well with my office in, uh, you know, looking to be sure there are funds available most of the time before they spend it. So I would just ask that you would give us the authority to go ahead and do these transfers.
I'd move to approve that.
Christian, I'm sorry, Chris Albertson moves to approve, to make a motion to go forward with Resolution, uh, twenty twenty-one dash R dash fifteen, is there a second?
I'll second.
Rick Mans seconds, questions, comments, concerns? Bring out all in favor of say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Suppose like sign? You can answer, thank you. Next is the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-one dash thirty-six, and ordinance amending the twenty twenty-one salary ordinance of two thousand twenty-one, uh, City of Scottsburg, Indiana.
So this goes in hand with the, um, COVID emergency papers discussed earlier. This is addressing the issue of any employee that's over that one hundred and fifty percent. So we're adding language into the twenty twenty-one salary ordinance that allows, um, specifically employees may receive performance bonuses or special compensation as determined by the city council or awards or warranty on things paid. And I would ask that we approve this on all three readings.
You will need to be done so to make this happen.
I'll make the motion that we approve the first reading.
Rick Mans makes the motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Albertson's second, questions, comments, concerns? Bring out all in favor of say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Suppose like sign? You can answer, thank you very much. Now's our motion to suspend the rules.
Making the motion to suspend the rules and have, uh, read by second, third read by title only.
Chris Albertson, Chris and Em, sorry, is aye? Makes a motion to suspend the rules, uh, is there a second?
I'll second.
Bill Holden seconds, questions, comments, concerns, all in favor of say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Suppose like sign? Bring out? Now that we can make, have a motion to go forward and pass it, the next two reads, I correct, correct. So is our motion to go forward with the second and third reads to pass ordinance twenty twenty-one dash thirty-six on second, third read?
Probably a motion to do that, pass on second, third reads by title only.
Because I was making the motion to pass, no, no, pass on second, third read, by title only, is there a second to that?
I'll second.
Rick Mans seconds, questions, comments, concerns? Bring out all in favor of say aye?
Aye.
Suppose like sign? You can answer, thank you very much. Next thing is, is, uh, Resolution twenty twenty-one dash R dash sixteen, a resolution authorizing bonuses to certain entities.
Since we have the authority to do it, now's the actual resolution providing the bonuses that by, or the same equivalent of the COVID emergency.
I, I'll make that motion. Rick Mans makes a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Christian Evans makes the second, questions, comments, concerns? Are you not all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Propose like sign? Unanimous, thank you very much. The next thing is first reading of ordinance 2021-34, an ordinance to close and terminate certain funds within the City of Scottsburg accounts. Give this to Ms. Jones.
Okay, and again, I like Josh stated with the last ordinance, I would request that we could, if you pass this on all three readings tonight. As you see, we just have two funds that we ask that we can close, and both, both of those were COVID. The small, the one was the small, the CARES Act Provider Relief Fund, and the other is the first small business grant fund that we had. We received both of those this year, or last year, we would like to close those funds.
We have just thirty-four, is that correct?
It's not thirty-four, it's thirty-five.
Just thirty-four.
Thirty-four, yes, on that one, yeah.
So is there a motion to go forward and close and terminate those funds within?
I'll make that motion to close those out.
Chris Albersen makes a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Bill Holman's second, questions, comments, concern? Are you not all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Propose like sign? Unanimous, is there now a motion to suspend the rules?
I'll make that motion to suspend the rules.
Mans makes a motion to suspend the rules, is there a second?
I'll second.
Christian Evans' second, questions, comments, concerns? Are you not all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Propose like sign? Unanimous. Now then, is there a motion to pass on second and third reading by title only?
I'll make that motion.
Bill Holman makes a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Christian Evans' second, questions, comments, concerns? Are you not all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Propose like sign? Unanimous, thank you very much. The next thing is first reading of ordinance 2021-35, an ordinance to create a non-recurring fund within the City of Scottsburg accounts. Ms. Farnum.
Okay, and this is to create a fund, because as you are aware, we received a four-million-dollar grant, a SWIFT grant. So, and again, we're very happy, but we did work very well with Midwestern Engineers on that one. They were, worked under crunch time, and we were fortunate enough to get that. So all we're asking, and again, we would like to do this all in three readings, to get that SWIFT grant set up. We have not received any of the money yet, but I know we will be meeting with the engineer hopefully sometime this week to, to discuss the, the funds and where they will be allocated.
I'm so thankful I can come before you and ask for a motion to be able to make a fund that we can put forward. Isn't that a blessing? Isn't that a blessing?
Well, I'll make that motion.
Hallelujah, hallelujah.
These last two won't be glad.
Rick Mans makes a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Chris Albersen's second, questions, comments, concerns? Are you not all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Propose like sign? Did you need this passed this evening?
Employees, we put together.
Is our motion to suspend the rules?
Make the motion to suspend the rules, have second, third reading by title only.
Christian Evans makes a motion to suspend the rules. And is there a second? Bill Holman's second, questions, comments, concerns? Are you not all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Propose like sign? Unanimous, thank you very much. Now we need a motion to pass a second, third reading on title only.
I'll make the motion.
Christian Evans makes a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Mans second, questions, comments, concerns? Are you not all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Propose like sign? Unanimous, thank you very much.
Thank you. I've been at my office for passing all of those.
I tell you, we thank the Lord. I tell you, in, in a little, almost two years, City of Scottsburg received a little over eight million dollars in grants. And so we're very thankful, Lord, we have this kind of funding to be able to go forward with so many different projects. Let me give you just a couple of updates, I've got announcements here, a couple of things. First off, let me ask the city council some announcements. Do we have any announcements? Announcements? Let me just give you a couple of things. One, if you noticed at Speedway and, and over on the opposite side, north of that, which would be the dolly tree, we had a massive problem. We had a sewer that collapsed on us and just, it was a problem. We didn't know if we're gonna have to dig the entire Highway 56 up or cross it, which would probably cost the citizens a hundred thousand dollars or so. I didn't dig that place out, it was gonna be a massive project. We were able to get a line for probably a tenth of that. So we're still thankful for that. We then went down to thirty-one, we had another line like that. So we caught the freight class right across from, what used to be the old night, however it's called today, Save Stepping, and we went over to Allen Street, so that was all line. We were beginning lining down, I think it's Lakeview, Bill's Lick, all the way down to Beechwood. That one beginning lining either tomorrow or Wednesday. Then we'll start lining down, all the way down from that place all the way down to Beechwood, all the way down to Highway 56, and then lining Woodland as well. What we're doing is we are trying to eliminate INI. We have clay, vigorous tile that's fifty to seven years old, road cracks, and it arranges with tickets incoming water. So we're lining those lines, and it's got, it's got a hundred years of war. I mean, we've been accessing two of these properties, the manufacturer has even wrapped the truck over to set up, so it's very tough and very good, so that's what's going on. I also want you to notice the sign in front of it. This is, you know, this is a sign that comes up with Scottsburg proud. As you know, we have our code enforcement, we're going around Scottsburg and asking folks to clean their places up and, and not to have trash. We wanna be the very best bigger community in the state we can be. So when we find a home or business that is cleaned up and immaculate, we're gonna, we wanna know, we wanna make it known. So we're gonna put a sign in your yard, you're Scottsburg proud. We want to put you on our Facebook site, you know, you know, here is Jerry Asher being found, Scottsburg proud. And then, and then have their ten days, two weeks, whatever, we wanna come back, we're gonna give you a badge. So we want you to see that, that's just what I was going forward. We want everybody to clean their place up. That's gonna do several things. Number one's gonna raise your property value, as we have cleaned places up, you know, raised property values. People are gonna wanna move here, you know, who would not want to live in Scottsburg, Indiana? And we're seeing more of that coming in from the urban areas into our town. So anyways, just to give you a heads up on that. What else do we have? Hope everybody had a great Thanksgiving. This is the second night of Hanukkah, so if you're lighting the second candle, hock some milk, and that's good. Something else, the castle?
Yeah, I got a question.
How?
What did we find out about the ground south of the cemetery? There's supposed to be.
Ground south of cemetery, those, what, the ground south of the cemetery was the old stock manufacturing property. There's about three acres there, and it has been, a brown field has been all gold. The brown field has been completed, those tests have all been given to the state, and right now the state is processing it, which is not a quick time period. Then the governor, what's the state processing, goes for the governor, he will sign that all, and then we're officially clear. Once it's officially clear, we have every plan to give it to the Scottsburg Cemetery Fund, or Cemetery, so that they can, there's another three acres or so out there that they can.
I, I, we, we appreciate that. Where are we on, on the company that owns the ground, then being able to transfer it over? Is that still ongoing? Or has that been?
The company that owns the ground, if you're talking Board Warner, is that who you're talking about?
Talking about people owns the ground?
My thinking is from, from caring is that Board Warner is giving that to, is giving it to the city, which we in turn is giving to the Scottsburg, they are gonna do that.
Okay, that's, that's, for twenty years or twenty-five years, that wasn't going to be that way. And all of a sudden, they've had a change of heart. But I'm just, it's just like that brown field thing, yeah. He, the state kept putting stuff right out there, and we kept right up to it, and they kicked that thing out another couple hundred yards. So that's, I was just wondering, this is just.
It's, it's, for those of you who've been here for a while with Bill and Jan and, and, I mean, this has been an ongoing thing, hasn't it?
Has been.
So, and it started long before us, so, you know, but it's, it's, it's coming to an end. It'll soon be before the governor, Lord will.
Okay.
Waiting for the state to finish Thursday and get it to the governor. I keep calling, you know, I call him about every four, five, six weeks.
We keep hauling dirt out there, putting it over into that chariot. I'm just making sure we don't have to give it back.
No, it should, it should be, it should be good. It should be good. And, and so hopefully we can find another generous corporate entity up there that will give us rest to square it off all the way down to railroad street. That's, that's what I'm gonna do. So, okay, I'll second. Good questions, what, what else? Anything else? Okay, okay. So we have a motion to adjourn.
So move.
We are adjourned, ladies and gentlemen, thank you so very much for attending.